Thank you, it is 9:30. We will call the June 2nd meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I would ask you to please sign in and the clerk take a role, and I believe that has been done and completed. At this time, I call on our county clerk, Cindy Supress. For the invocation, I'd ask you to please just rise and then make standing for the board.
Please join me in prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, we give thanks on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your abundant blessings. Thank you for the help we need in order to fulfill our calling. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our responsibilities. Thank you for your boundless love. Thank you for those elected officials gathered here and for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Thank you for the ability to see the true needs of people we affect. Thank you for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Thank you for the blessing of living and working here in Wood County. In your name, amen.
Please join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, welcome. I was praying during Cindy's invocation that my phone didn't ring because I don't think I turned it off.
That worked.
So the first thing we do is that. All right. I guess the first thing we need to do is take care of the minutes from the previous session and entertain the motion and the act of respect by Supervisor Fire and seconded by Supervisor LaFontaine. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Today, we have no excusals. We have a resignation from the Ethics Committee by Brittany Boyer, and that's because Brittany has accepted a position out of the county and is no longer employed. She was an employee appointed to that board, so I entertain a motion to that effect. Supervisor Hamilton, seconded by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Going down to appointments, we have several today. First one, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, a three-year term. Supervisor Klendanny. The Wood County Wildlife Area Advisory Committee, a three-year term. Dale Weiss, Scott Anderson, Kirk Luke. And our Central Regional Planning Commission, as a county employee, Gerald Nelson. I entertain a motion to that effect. Supervisor Lightfoot, followed by Supervisor Hinkle. Any discussion on those appointments? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries unanimously. Raise us down to public comment. Any public comment today? I know I have some public comment by a county board supervisor, who'd like to make an introduction. Professor Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how many of you know, but we have hired a new Edgewater Haven administrator, and so I would like to introduce you to Cindy Robinson and have her stand up and put a name to the face and let her tell you just a little bit about herself. She's been here since last Monday, is that correct?
Good morning, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Well, I am Cindy Robinson, and I am very, very happy to be here, and I am most privileged to serve the residents of Wood County. I have been a nursing home administrator previously for Golden Living in the Tamahut area. My hometown is Canover, Wisconsin. Yay! Some of you know where that is? Really? It's north of Eagle River. My home is about 10 miles from the Upper Pines, Love, Michigan, so sometimes you may hear that Uper exit come through. I do consider the long-term care area my mission field. I love what I do, and I take great pride in what I do, and I do really mean when I say I am privileged to do what I do, and it is an honor to be here and serve the residents of Wood County. I have a very strong open-door policy. I never considered a complaint a complaint, it's an opportunity for improvement, and I welcome any and all of you to share your concerns, thoughts, and opportunities for improvement with me at any time. And I hope I get to know all of you. I'm working really hard to remember names and faces, so forgive me if I go wrong. You guys have an advantage, you only have to remember one name, Cindy. So I'll work really hard to get to know all of you, and I really do appreciate this opportunity, and thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Welcome. Any other public comments? Any other public comments today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There weren't any June 2nd executive minutes in our packet today. Was there any particular reason that they weren't put in or whatever happened to them?
I don't know.
I don't have an answer.
I think I did them.
I don't have an answer either, but I can look into it and see if they weren't submitted for the packet. I don't know. I'll look into it for you.
June 2nd was a fact.
June 6th.
I think it was June 6th.
June 6th.
June 6th.
That's probably why.
Yes, I don't know. I did miss that meeting because I was elsewhere, but the seat committee was the next day, and their minutes are in there. I thought it was an opportunity to have these early in the month, so they would be in the county board packet for that particular month. I'm a little frustrated about what was on the agenda. Still, I don't know how it turned out on a lot of things, but there is a lot of things going on in the county as a result of that meeting that can't be discussed today. I find it very disappointing that those minutes are not in there.
Okay, if you have a notification of the future, all of you received your packet last Thursday. You know that missing minutes could have been related to the clerk, and certainly an oversight, but they could have been included at that point in time. If anyone noticed something, the board was missing, let the clerk know right away and double-check and make sure we get it to the packet. Supervisor Mal.
Thank you. I just want to apologize, I got the wrong date, it was June 6th, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Either way, it still should have been attached, and we'll double-check, but if anybody ever notices that in the future, let us know, so we can get there right away. Any other public comment? Public comment? Now, if you take care of all supervisors. All right, we have no public comment today. Acknowledgements and recognitions, we have the opportunity today to acknowledge and recognize some of those long-term employees that are a backbone of our workforce here. We have several of those today, and the first person I'm going to call forward, but can't is Brandon Ruin. Brandon has several presentations to make on behalf of the Human Services.
Is this working?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, the first person I'd like to recognize, and I'd ask you to come forward when I call your name, is Jan Wolf. So, this is Jan's 25th anniversary, so she's been with us for 25 years, and I'd like to recognize Jan for all of her hard work and dedication for the citizens of Wood County, most importantly, for her work concerning children and families in the Wood County area for the past 25 years. So Jan has transitioned jobs a couple of times, and most recently transitioned to the role of Family Resource Coordinator, and she's working really in-depth with children and families to help families become reunified after they've been removed from the home, so this is really tough work. Previous to that, she was in more of a support role, supporting families and helping them arrange for transportation, to do visits, medical appointments, and things like that. But Jan's been an active part of a number of groups within our department, including the Social Committee, which really is a morale-boosting group, and she works very hard to spread cheer within our department. Sometimes that's tough, we have some tough situations, but she's really done a great job, and we are very fortunate to have her as part of our team. And I'm hoping we got a few years left as we go forward, so I'd like to recognize Jan for her service. So as we go along, we have four folks today. We're going to move up to the 30-year mark, and the next person I'd like to come forward is Mary Pat Altman. And Mary Pat has been with us for 30 years. She currently works as an Economic Support Supervisor out of our Marshfield City Hall office. I've been fortunate to work with Mary Pat since I began employment at Wood County, so we worked together for a number of years. I learned a great deal from Mary Pat as I grew up in Wood County Human Services. She has transitioned to a supervisory role over three years ago and has done a tremendous job supporting families in our Wood County Department and also in Marshfield area. She has done a great job transitioning to help supervise our 12-county Northern Incamislands Consortium, and is considered one of the great leaders within our consortium. She is one of the fastest processors of work I've ever met in the economic support world, and she's a very quick learner, and she's always asking for more work to do, which is kind of a nice thing in our world, somebody that's actually asking for more work because she becomes so efficient. So, it's with great honor that I recognize Mary Pat Altman, and we're really happy to have you part of our team, Mary Pat. Next, I would like to recognize Isla Jean Babcock. Jean is not able to be here today, but it's also her 30-year anniversary in Wood County. Jean has worked in our Children's Long-Term Support area for the past 30 years, providing support to children with disabilities, which is really intensive work. She provided great support to our staff as they work directly with kids, making sure that they're connected to the resources that they need. Jean has also taken on a role during lunch breaks and after work to put on some yoga sessions for Human Services employees to try to provide some stress relief for them. So we're very appreciative of her going above and beyond and thinking outside the box, so I would like to recommend, recognize Jean for her hard work over the past 30 years, and I will present her with this packet when I see her. Lastly, we have a 35-year mark. We're working on her to commit to 40 years, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. So I'd like to ask Connie Lang to come forward. And Connie has worked as an Economic Support worker for us and has done a tremendous job as well. She worked in our Marshfield City Hall office, now she has transitioned to our Centralia office in Wisconsin Rapids. She's getting used to moving. She also moved to our Johnson Hills building for a while, then to Centralia, and she will land at a Riverblock building, and I think she's thinking that probably is going to be her last move. So, but I would be excited to have her join us at the Riverblock building, and we'll all be together. Connie brings great cheer and laughter, her laughter is contagious, and she's done a great job of connecting all of us together. Connie resides in the Sherry area, which is an area that's very dear to my heart, so we have that common bond of the Sherry area. And I want to thank Connie for her work in connecting folks to support over the course of her career. She's made a significant difference in the lives of many, and I would like to commend her for her 35 years of service, and I thank you, Connie.
As we go on with these presentations, I'm obviously sitting in a judge's chair, and I always wanted to say this, Judge Wolf, would you please approach the bench? I've got, I was telling, you know, sometimes I've heard some of these special orders of business three or four times before they get here, and I read his notes, and I think I could actually serve as a judge for part of the morning in some cases because it's all the way down here.
With she notes?
Judge Wolf, who is our Circuit Court branch three judge, is the chair I'm sitting in today, the floor is yours.
That's funny, I always think I'm sitting in your chair. Well, I have privilege to giving the 30-year recognition here to Luann Mans. I came here in 89 and worked in the DA's office until I became judge here in 2009, so I had a chance to work with Luann, and even when I was an ADA, the DA, and now I've had the privilege, just short of eight years now, to work for her. Honestly, that is the way it works because of what she does in that office. She, I'm sure as far as evaluations come, there's always a box I want to put off to the right even more for, as far as she's concerned here, because there's not anything that she doesn't do for my office, there's not, she manages all my cases, she is able to put together the calendar that makes it work efficiently for me, she's able to make sure all the documents that come in are done well, and even like today, we had divorce scheduled today, she looks through all that paperwork for me, talks with the people, and it just makes my job so much better. And I keep telling her that I expect to have her be around here for 35, 40, for as long as I'm here, I expect her to be here as well. She hasn't always given me the commitment, but she keeps promising, kind of behind the scenes, she'll stay around. I think what's so important with Luann, especially right now, is the other two JAs, Judicial Assistants, the other branches, have changed over here, and I know constantly they are looking for her for the guidance that she has and the experience that she has in order to have everything work efficiently in all the branches here, so with my great appreciation, I do present her with her 30-year recognition.
Last but not least, Supervisor Mike Fire, who chairs our Public Safety Committee, has recognition. I got a judge with a sentencing, a sheriff with an arrest in here, we got two really important guys we're recognizing today.
I would like to have Tom Reichert come forward, please. As Tom's coming up, I'd like to give a little story. I've known Tom probably for about 15 years, but I did work with his grandfather back in Marshfield, he was, we cooked together at the Legion, and I can honestly tell you that I can see where Tom got his temperament, because Gordier Earl was a pistol. Fun guy to be with. And in behalf of the Wood County and the Public Emergency Government and everybody else, we're proud of what Tom has done with our department. He has straightened out the way they run the Sheriff's Department. We're very happy with the money that they save us and how they operate, and at this time, it gives me great pleasure to present Tom Reichert a 35-year award, and I know that you came up through the ranks, and we're glad to have you and we hope you stay a few more years. Thank you.
It's really so touching that we all, to me, that we all gather here today to really, you know, acknowledge and commemorate the first half of my career. The truth of the matter is that working at the Sheriff's Department and being sheriff is really, you know, my dream job, and it's something that, you know, I have held really close to my heart, and it's something that's really been important to me. In typical fashion, my staff has come up to join us, to join us today, and they're really the reason, they're really the reason why we've had the success that we've had at the Sheriff's Department. They work hard, they do, you know, they do the things that we need to do, and it's made my job and my career just an absolute joy. It's been, I've had just a tremendous amount of fun. Coincidentally, on Friday will be the, will be the, will be the day that will mark the 12th anniversary of my being sheriff. So it is, time is going fast right now, it's really moving exponentially, and I think that we've all kind of experienced that in my life, but I'm very touched by the kindness that you have all shown me. We've had a great run, you know, the county board has been a huge part of it, Public Safety Committee has done a great job of working together with me on making the Sheriff's Department really the department that other departments look to for guidance and for example. Thank you so much, I'm looking forward to working with all of you for the rest of my career. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We have an ambitious agenda today, and we have about nine or 10 resolutions in the packet. We have a special presentation by the Parks Department in regard to the Power of the Block project, and we have a hearing back of the packet, it was a termination hearing, and the final step in the complaint resolution process. That will happen as close to 10:30 as I can make that happen. So we're going to probably have to move some things around a little bit to accommodate that schedule. We might even have to take a short break at some point just to get to that point because I don't want to start a half-hour presentation break into two pieces and then we're finished. So with that, we'll move into the packet. You had several referrals that were on page five, I think there were about seven of them, all under the appropriate departments and/or supervisors. And then that takes us into the packet, page six, which is the minutes of the Executive Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 2nd, that's on page six, and seven, as well as eight. This Executive Committee meeting minutes of Tuesday, May 16th, on page nine. The Subcommittee, Riverblock Subcommittee, to shorten the name of the whole thing, of Friday, May 5th, on page 10 and 11. The Wood County Employee Wellness Board meeting minutes of Thursday, March 9th, on 12, 13, and 14. The Wellness Board meeting minutes of Thursday, May 11th, on 15 and 16. Their minutes from Tuesday, May 30th, on 17 and 18. Monthly letter of comments from the Maintenance Department, and I know every one of us in this room has watched the yeoman's effort that Ruben and his crew have done as we've gone through the moving process and the entire Riverblock and courthouse remodeling process. I want to thank you, the whole board, publicly, but as you read these reports every week, this doesn't even touch on the stuff he deals with on a daily basis, he's just trying to give us enough data of what's going on. Ruben, thank you very much. Safety and Risk Management, page 20, their letter of comments remain. On page 21, we have the comments and monthly update from the county clerk. I did have IT up here right before this meeting started saying that we're having a little problem with the backlog, the amount of emails that we still have in the system, over 100,000, I understand, that go back to 2014. So what we are going to do is delete all of those up till this year, so we'll keep one year of those old emails in those files, put everything back in 14, 15, is that correct? Go ahead, go to the microphone. We'll keep one year of, yeah, we'll go back one year.
The only thing we're going to get rid of is the deleted items. So if anything that you save in subfolders, your inbox will be fine, just the deleted items, we're going to get rid of if it's older than usual.
So we're going to purge that stuff, so we absolutely, hopefully that will create an opposite dozen of old email, I think that will be a problem. Thank you. She said we'll save this many, that advice, and this one, I said, "read it in English."
Yes.
Marko's letter of comments from the Finance Department, from Tuesday, June 6th, on page 22, 23, Supervisor Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, I'd like to highlight paragraph three, where Frank is making a statement, "Therefore, the annual principal and interest would be $110,000 for each million dollars borrowed over a 10-year payback." Just wanted to highlight that, as I'll be talking about it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lynch. Our last page is 22, page 23. Brings us to the first resolution in your packet, page 24, this comes from the Executive.
This will be Resolution 17-6-1, accept and sign off on the quitclaim deed of the 1.27 acre parcel located in the town of Saratoga from a private individual fiscal note, small savings by avoiding the tax deed process.
For the reading of the resolution, a motion by Hamilton, and a second by Brian. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Just one second here. Okay, please vote.
Buckaboo that was here with the other systems still there.
I figured it wasn't your fault. All right, fast unanimously, thank you very much. That's page 24 in your packet. Beginning on page 25, minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee, their meeting from May 25th, on 25 and 26. Community Care Connections of Wisconsin, their board meeting minutes of December 15th, on 27 and 28. The monthly update from the Health Department, under Director Comfortman, beginning on page now, 29, and running through page 32, 29, 30, 31, and 32. The Veteran Service Officers Report, on page 33 and 34. Report from Edgewater Haven, on 35. And that brings us to the first resolution from the Health and Human Services Committee, Post-Supervising Judicial and Legislative Committee, page 36 in your packet.
This will be Resolution 17-6-2, to change the Programs and Services Description for County Department Section of the Rules and Committees of the Wood County Board of Supervisors, so as to move Edgewater Haven from an independent program to a subunit of the Wood County Human Services Department. Fiscal note, unknown. There are expected efficiencies and cost savings anticipated, which cannot be quantified accurately at this time.
Motion by Fisher, seconded by Klendanny. Any discussion on the resolution? Supervisor Zerkel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's kind of hard to vote for something on a fiscal note states unknown, there are expected efficiencies and cost savings anticipated, which cannot be qualified accurately at this point. So I would ask, if I may, Chairman Rosa, if she might be able to shed some light on it at least.
Absolutely. Thank you, Professor Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how to put any better of a fiscal note on this, because we don't really know. We expect for savings to be occurring because of efficiencies, as the whereas is state. We're looking to combine some ordering so that we can have cost savings through vendors. We're looking for increased oversight so that there are more eyes looking at things. As the resolution says, the industry has changed so much since we opened this home 100 years ago, and because of that changing industry, you have to be so diligent in looking at the way you're running the organization. And the committee believes that with increased oversight, with increased collaboration between the two licensed nursing home administrators, there can be efficiencies found. We don't know exactly what those efficiencies are going to be just yet, because we have to get into it as we look at ways to do the things that I stated. We'll have two maintenance departments that we can work together with, working with capital improvements. Like I said, there'll be some increased collaboration between Jordan and Cindy in seeing where cost savings can be had as they look at which vendors they're ordering supplies from, and can we see cost savings by combining the ordering of those two institutions? And with Cindy on board and with Jordan's continued expertise, I really think that we're going to see some cost savings and efficiencies, and if we didn't believe that, we would not have brought this resolution before the board. Does that answer your question in part?
I now have an explanation, thank you.
Supervisor Ma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having been a past member of the Health and Human Services Committee and still very much involved with that as far as a philosophic standpoint, I would say that this is one of those issues that probably transcends money. I think that administratively, this is the thing to do, this is the proper thing to do for Edgewater, and that the real reward will come with having a much cleaner and more effective administration of that building. Thank you.
Supervisor Klendanny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be voting for this. I voted at one time to rebuild the firm of that, not because we could sell it for more money or anything like that, because I believe that, I think we should take care of our residents in Wood County. I think it's a money-making thing. And this is in my opinion, I think it has been mismanaged in the past. My mother stayed there for a period of eight years, and my daughter worked there, and so did my son, and I would like to see this thing continue, and I think this is a great change. I think Brandon Berwick was not mentioned in this, but what Brandon Berwick has done I think Brandon Berwick was not mentioned in this, but what Brandon Berwick has done since he's been the administrator for Health and Human Services, I think we should give him a chance and go through with this, and with a new director on board. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Mr. Stevens, please vote. Supervisor Clendeney, an orious stand on the issue. They're, their resolution passed 18 to 1. Thank you.
I wish for trying to get into my height.
Let the clerk record that for a second. That takes us to page 37 in the packet, minutes of the Conservation, Education, Economic Development Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 16th, that's 37 and 38. Their meeting of Wednesday, June 7th, begins on page 39, and runs through page 43, 39, 41, 2, and 3. Supervisor Lydon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look on page 40, there's a small paragraph there with the name Mark Borckhardt in it, toward the top. Mark Borckhardt is a name that some of you know, it's a name that all of you should know. Two weeks ago, he and eight Marshfield area residents spoke to the seat committee about the Enbridge Pipeline, which transverses both the state and the county from northwest to southeast. Enbridge is a Canadian pipeline company that transports Canadian crude oil, to refineries in Oklahoma and all states. Now, Enbridge wants to add to their 80-foot easement, a fifth and a sixth pipeline, it's called a twinning of line 66 in Wisconsin. What's so egregious about Enbridge, as far as these people are concerned, is that Enbridge is a foreign company that wants to use private land for their own gain, not for public good, but for their private gain, and then they want to let landowners pay the taxes on it to do it through. And how much land are they asking for now, an additional easement? Well, they're asking, remember, there's 80, they're asking for 80 to 280 feet more. So on a perpendicular, on a right angle, that would be like the length of a football field. The Marshfield Group, which is headed by Mark Borckhardt, maintains that through three expansion projects, when I bought my land there, there was just one pipe, that they've done their patriotic duty, and they say that 80 feet is enough, and thus their name. To calm down the Marshfield Group's angst, last year, a backdoor maneuver in Madison changed the eminent domain laws of the state, I don't think many of you know that, with a little-known budgetary action, which is called Motion 999. 80 feet enough, 80 feet is enough, is asking the Wood County Board to pass a resolution, and I think you're going to see Mark here again with that, to reform Wisconsin's eminent domain statutes to prohibit this forcible taking of Wisconsin citizens' land for private gain by a for-profit pipeline company from out of the country. I urge this body to invite Mark Borckhardt back again, and hear more of what he says about Enbridge's plans. By the way, you've heard them, someone given the seat committee, they say they have no plans. I want to also just continue on page 40, you should know the name Mark Borckhardt for another reason. On the evening of, or on the morning of June 7th, he was here in Wood County to address the seat committee on the Enbridge thing. Well, then, less than 10 hours later, he traveled to Kiwanee County to present the results of the Kiwanee Study on Well Contamination to the people of Kiwanee County. When he talked to our southeast Wood County Groundwater Group, he said he couldn't say that much, although he did, until he talked to the people of Kiwanee County. And so I want to share a few things with you that he said to them that night, two weeks ago. You might remember that the estimate was that in Kiwanee County, 40% of the county's private wells were contaminated. Okay, here's the update. He said that parasite crypto was found in 12% of the randomly sampled wells, they sampled 131. Rotavirus A showed up in another 14% of the private wells in Kiwanee County. Some other pathogens that showed up were E. coli, Salmonoon Rotavirus C, they were also present in the well samples in Kiwanee County. The first of those, let me struggle with the name here, Cryptosporidiosis, can lead to severe or life-threatening illnesses for people with weakened immune systems. So how does that affect a county that's only a quarter of the population of Wood County? Okay, I'm going to give you some, I think, shocking numbers here. It means, according to Borckhardt from two weeks ago, that each year you could expect 140 people and 1,700 cows to be infected with Cryptosporidiosis, and they'd get sick. Recalculating for a county our size, that would be 560 people and 6,000 cows infected. And what was the worst Cryptosporidium outbreak in U.S. history? I don't remember it, I was shocked when I read this, it was Milwaukee, Wisconsin, 1993, 400,000 people were sick, and 69 died. Okay, so what about Rotavirus C? That causes diarrhea, vomiting, dehydration, and possible death in humans. In March, when Mark Borckhardt was here talking to the southeast Wood County Groundwater Group, he said, "You find this sort of thing in China and India." And then he said, "We've never seen these results before." And of course, he was meaning here in the United States, well, not until Kiwanee County anyway. He said a couple of other things in Kiwanee County on June 7th. He said, "It's my professional opinion, based on 25 years of experience as a microbiologist, that if we sampled more than once," now, you'll remember that they sampled 131 wells randomly, and they did it just once. So he said, "It's my professional opinion that if you did that more than once, the well contamination rate," he said 40%, right? "The well contamination rate would creep to 90% of all the wells, private wells in Kiwanee County." Then one county resident asked him whether dispensing less manure would reduce well contamination, and Borckhardt said, "You don't need a scientist for that one."
Mr. Lydon, can I just ask a question? I'm not sure how this refers in any way that 80 is enough, then it's.
It does, the next item down.
Okay. Trying to see where you're going, and that.
That's why I said two.
And you're welcome to speak at it, but Robert Field's board put anybody reading anything on board floor, so feel free to summarize.
I can't say Cryptosporidiosis, well. Okay, so at the end of that meeting, I'm getting where you want me to be, Mr. Chairman, at the end of that meeting, Davina Bonas, who Shane knows, she's the head of the Kiwanee County Land and Water Conservation Department, she said, "I urge the county board to really soak this in, and I would urge this county board to really soak this in." She also said that the results of the study should show that we need stricter controls. So, by the way, the seat committee that met two weeks ago at that meeting, Mark Borckhardt volunteered to come here, talk to us about Enbridge and about water issues. The other researchers, I'm just citing some names up here, especially for our southeast groundwater group, the other researchers' names are Maureen Mulduan and Randy Hunt, they work for the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and the U.S. Geological Survey's Water Science Center. So in light of all this, Mr. Chairman, I have some recommendations I'd like to make. I'd like to urge the Wood County Board to do this, to number one, invite Mark Borckhardt back. Number two, I'd like to urge the Land and Water Conservation Department to use Davina Bonas as a resource person, that would be if she has time. I'd like to urge the Wood County Board, and this is the most important thing I'm going to say this morning, to understand that well contamination can happen as easily in sandy subsoils as it can in karst. The fourth thing I'd like to urge is that the Wood County Board move more closely to study well contamination and surface runoff issues in the Marshfield area. I'd also urge this committee, this county board, to fund clean water projects that we're talking about doing in the southeast Wood County Groundwater Group. I urge the Wood County Board to support regional groundwater protection initiatives undertaken by the central seance counties, especially Washera and Portage. I urge that the Wisconsin Counties Association become more active in clean water issues. I urge that in a worst-case contingency plan, I think a worst-case contingency plan should be developed by the Wood County Health Department and emergency government for a large-scale well contamination episode here, that never happened. And then finally, I'd like to urge my fellow members on the county board to separately and collectively, and think about how you'd do that, write to Wisconsin legislators, the governor, tell them to get their heads out of the sand, Saratoga Seance, unintended. You'll be heard in the committee agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Obviously, requests like that, to what they pray for, would come out of the committee, I feel the committee may, at some point, take that upward, and that's the channel that we're stood at.
Understood.
Supervisor Hinkle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to correct a few numbers that apparently did not properly get calculated when this article and report was read. There were 600-plus wells that were tested in Kiwanee County, that is not all of the wells in Kiwanee County. Of those wells, there were 231, I believe, that had some point, kind of contamination. And then the second testing was going back to about half of those already known to be contaminated wells, and the numbers that were reported were from those previously contaminated, recognized as contaminated wells. So when the reporter that wrote up the article, who obviously was not a statistical genius, wrote things up, I worked sometimes for the paper, and I recognize that they are not, that is not one of their strengths. He reported that there was an 80% or more contamination, without clarifying that that was the already identified problematic wells, rather than all of the wells. We do not know the real full extent of this, but no matter what the extent is, having that many wells contaminated is serious. But miscalculating the numbers for an effect is a cheap trick.
Any other discussion on the minutes from the seat committee of that date? Supervisor Clendeney.
Sounds like we got some false news here, huh? Fake news, yeah, that's exactly it. It's funny when we stand up here and talk about water, and it was really started in the Judicial Legislative Committee, and it ends up in argument all the time now. I'm kind of disgusted with it myself, but I want to talk about the 80 is enough. 80 is enough, I've been to many meetings on 80 is enough, even with the Towns Association up in Arborndale, when we had a meeting up there, it was also discussed. My personal opinion about this whole water thing, I don't think the Health Committee is involved in nothing. I thought it left the Judicial Legislative Committee and the Health Department would be more involved. This is what happened up in Kiwanee County, and I hope this isn't fake news, but the health nurse up there lost her job because she was trying to support clean water. So I see where the direction of the water here in Wood County has gone. Would say, who can be against clean water? Well, I would say a lot of people on this board are for dirty water.
Any further, Supervisor Kramer?
Well, I think that, as we, I've sat on this board now for three-plus months, and every meeting I've been to, water quality has been brought up, and it seems the finger is almost solely pointed at farming, and particularly livestock farming. I think we need, as a board and as a society, to look at the whole picture if we're going to start developing policy. And I would say, as a farmer, certainly farmers have a cross there. I will not argue that, that we have, as an industry, had challenges in the past, and I think we have a long ways to go. But I think it's important to realize that every farmer, whether they milk 20 cows or 20,000 cows, has a family and children, and they want the future of that, for their family and children, to have clean water, not dirty water. So let's get that straight right now. I don't think there's a farmer out there that intentionally is trying to pollute or harm the environment. That's how they feed their community, that's how they feed their own children and family. Now, that being said, I take issue with it being directed at farmers, and I don't know what the specific ask is, are we trying to eliminate farming? Because there are nutrient management plans, there are comprehensive nutrient management plans, there are things put in place by the state, by the county, that Shane works on very hard, that every farmer works on very hard. I went to a meeting, there was farmers that are actually writing their own nutrient management plans now. I went to a training two years ago that opened my eyes to soil runoff and erosion, and that's why we're switching our farm to no-till more and more every year. But I want to get back to the point that it's not just farming, and I can give you a very specific example, probably right in Saratoga, that I don't know for sure exists, but I'm quite certain it does. How many people in this area go to a hardware store in the spring of the year and buy a bag of triple 19? And they take that bag home, and they put it in their little yard spreader, and they whip around their 100-by-100 lot, they probably should have used about an inch of that bag. But, you know, you really don't want to see it sit in the garage all year, see it, you put it on, and if some is good, more is better. Well, when you look at, for instance, over in the counties you're talking about, like Winnebago, certainly some of that is, and a lot of that is farmer cross, but a lot of that is city, city people, that are overapplying phosphorus, and when it rains, it goes right into that storm gutter, and right into the treatment system, and eventually, probably into the Winnebago system. So I think that we need to keep, I think we need to really understand the farmer's intention is to do conservation, and the intention is to do what's right, not only for their family, but for their community members. Are there bad eggs? Absolutely, there's bad eggs in every industry. I think that we really need to have that wide scope, and not just point at either livestock industry or large farm versus small farms. A farmer's a farmer, and I think that we need to have that vision moving forward, and not just pick on a KFO farm, especially ones that are permitted. I would challenge you to actually go out and look at some of these larger farms, tour some of them. Most of the larger farms are some of the most clean, well-run farms there are. When you go around and look at smaller, you know, older farms, a lot of times, those are the farms that are not as meaten up to the bar, and some of that, a lot of that is regulation that the KFOs are under. So I just want to make sure that, I voice that, that the farmers are in for conservation, we have the farmer want clean water, as well as almost every farmer I know, and we need to keep our eye on the ball with that, as we develop our policy. Thank you.
Supervisor Lydon?
I'll make this really quick. If we want to check the facts that appeared in the paper, I think having Mark Borckhardt back will do that, of course. The other thing is, the southeast Wood County Groundwater Group is meeting this Thursday through 4 o'clock, Saratoga Town Hall. I haven't seen a lot of you there.
Thank you, sure this discussion will continue. Any other discussion on the minutes? All right, we're done with page 43. Go to page 44, and pages 44 through 49, and then, if one meeting, then continue on 44 all the way to 57, are the various minutes of the Golden Sands Water Contamination Development Council Incorporated. Starts with the regular business and executive committee meeting of May 18, on 44, and runs through 49, and then 50 to 57, additional minutes from their meetings. Any questions on any of those? Any questions on any of the Golden Sands? North Central IFED Board meetings, Thursday, March 30th, the pages 58 to 61, 58 to 61. 58 to 61. UW Extension, beginning with Peter Manley's report, pages 62, 63, and 64. Questions there? For planning and zoning, beginning with Director Gruber's SCAP report, pages 65, 6, 7, and 8. 65 through 62. Land and Water Conservation Department's monthly activity report, beginning at 69, running through page 73. And that brings us to page 74, and the next resolution in the packet brought forward by the seat.
This will be Resolution 17-6-3, to authorize the submission of a state grant application and the subsequent appropriation of county funds and outside donations for a household hazardous waste clean sweep program for Wood County in 2018. Fiscal note, county funds of $20,000, anticipated state grants $9,000.
Motion by Roser, a second by Plandani. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? If not, vote. Resolution passed 19-0. Next resolution in your packet, again from the seat committee?
This will be Resolution 17-6-4, to allow the extra territorial planning of areas outside the boundaries of the City of Marshfield to be included in the City of Marshfield 2017 through 2037 Comprehensive Plan. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County.
And a motion by Supervisor Fider, and a second by Supervisor Fisher on this one. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Supervisor Plandani?
Yes, this involves township, township government, you know, it's easy for a city to have extra territorial zoning, go out and want green space. I'll give you a good example of Highway 10 in the Marshfield area in, up in Arberdale. It took a lot of great land, great farmland, and now we want to go out and destroy some more farmland because we, maybe we want to create a, this is a, this is a, a century county, and form our own county, but we need more land to do that, I guess. I would be voting against it, because I think it's just entrapping townships and having to give up land.
Supervisor Fider?
I think one of the easy answers to this is, this is not, this is planning, not zoning. We're looking for a long-range plan, and I know that this is one of those things that, we've been working on this for quite a while, and to put a con plant together, it takes some time, and if you're bordered by part of a swamp, you, you kind of, can only go a certain place if you want to expand, and I think it's, it's, it's a plan, not zoning, and that's one way to look at it. And just because we're going to put in our con plant doesn't mean that we're going to, next year, we're going to move into this area and take the land, or it's not going to happen now.
I'm going to go to Supervisor Wagner, and then Supervisor Hinkle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It should be noted that we went above and beyond the call of duty with this, with our comprehensive plan. We brought it to every township, we talked to them about it, so they know what we're doing and what we're doing. It should also be worthy to note that we had at one time, although its usefulness has passed now, we had a joint boundary commission agreement with the Towne Cameron, and we also had a joint boundary agreement, we continue to have, the joint boundary agreement with the Towne McMillan in Merrifield County. We have regular meetings with those folks, and we talk about things, and we work about things. We also work out what, you've got to remember that annexation cannot take place unless the owner of the property actually requests it. We respect their joint boundary agreement, too. We expect and we respect the fact that their concerns about what they want for their community, for their community are just as important as ours, and we take all of those in consideration. The land grab that is being referred to here just simply doesn't exist, and I don't know where Century County came into that mess either. So essentially, if you have any, I know Josh Miller is here, if you have any questions of him, but I don't know the times of the essence, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that unless you really need Josh to come up and explain it to you better.
Supervisor Hinkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have you look at the third, whereas. Our role as a county is to see whether this comprehensive plan conflicts with any of our ordinances or things. It does not, and it was recommended by our director of planning and zoning to approve.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I can understand where Marshfield is coming from, and I don't see anything wrong with that, but what concerns me, if you go to page 78, there's going to be a public hearing in Marshfield, and this time I'll try to get the date right on this one, June 27. I, I think that before we would vote on this, I think that it'd be important to hear the comments that would come out of that public hearing. Probably going to be positive, I'm not sure, but I would just assume that this would be held over for another month for the final vote. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Supervisor Wagner to answer that question.
There have been, I don't know how many, I would like to ask Josh, how many public input hearings have we had on this already? With your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Permission of the board to get those questions answered by the City of Marshfield?
Yeah. The point I'm trying to make is, there's been a lot. Josh, please go ahead.
Yeah, we've had quite a few, part of the plant adoption, sort of, the public participation plan. We've had public forums, we've had surveys that have gone out, we've had town hall meetings, and we've also been to each town board meeting to present the land use plan and the plan itself. So we've, we've, by state requirements, we do have to have one public hearing, and we're doing that before the common council next week, but we've already had a lot of public feedback. We've had almost 800 individuals participate in some form or another in this planning process, so.
Any other supervisors? Further discussion? Supervisor Asher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why don't you see this motion up here, or this resolution? We have so much involved in line conservation, and it comes under planning and zoning, but you probably should, but we have people sitting on the board that, from the SES office, they represented the Soil Conservation Service, and he didn't have a break to walk because they'd come under the, on the planning and zoning, so he sat alongside me, he says my hands are tied, so that's kind of an issue here, because it's more, but if I credit or not, that probably wouldn't have come out with the committee yet, I'd remove it. So, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion on the resolution? Anyone else have further discussion? All right, I ask you to please vote. That resolution passed 14-5. I mean, at the point, it's 10:31 right now, and our agenda calls for the final step in the complaint resolution process, this quasi-judicial situation we're going to go into here occurs as close to 10:30 as we can, because I think we're going to, this will go for a few minutes, it'll take a while, we'll continue with the seat minutes at that point. Would the board like to take a quick five-minute break? All right, let's take a five-minute break. We can get organized here, Mr. Eswin can get organized, and then we will, if we need about five minutes, so if you can make it quick, that'd be great. All right, it's about as close to 10:30 as we could get, allowing everybody to breathe. We are right now moving into the final step in the complaint resolution process, where we have gone through the entire process over a period of a number of months to reach this point. This is in regard, and all of you have all of the paperwork that was contained in your packet. I believe it started on page 132, and moved forward pretty close to the end of the packet. There's the link for that, yeah. So you've received all of the paperwork. So what we have in front of us today is a hearing on the termination of Mr. Eswin. This is a, it's a quasi-judicial situation, and it's a certiori or paper review of the record provided by the independent hearing officer in the process up to that point. You're not allowed to cross-examine anybody, you're not allowed to ask questions of the plaintiff in this case. Both Mr. Eswin and, I believe, Mr. Kraft, representing the Human Resources Department, will be allowed five minutes to present a summary of the case that was already provided to the independent hearing officer, what you had already read in printed form. We'll have a timeout, and there's three of them, Mr. Eswin, Mark, you'll be able to see the one that would be right in front, it's up on the screen, there's also a clock here. If somebody's at 5:01 or 5:02 or something like that, and I see they're finishing a sentence, I will certainly, Allah, have the attitude, I'm not going to cut them off in a sentence. Does anybody from the board, any of the supervisors, have any questions before we begin the process? Okay. With that, Mr. Eswin, Mark, if you would come forward, I can give you the podium up here. The microphone is on, you have to be fairly close to it for it to pick up, and you will have five minutes to present your verbal summary of the case that you, as supervisors, have received in written format. So we won't start you until you're organized up there, you're ready to vote.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you all for letting me come, and it's been a year and a half since this incident's happened, so that's how, that's how long I've waited to give my side of the story. I gave up my legal representation during this ordeal so I could sit down and meet with Lance one-on-one. These are the findings from the State of Wisconsin Unemployment Office. It says the employee discharged, the employee's discharge was not for misconduct or substantial fault connected to his employment. The employee was discharged for making an inappropriate comment at work. The employee's comment may have been questionable, but he was never warned for his behavior. The employee's actions are not found to show willful and/or substantial disregard for the employer's interests or substantial fault connected with his employment. On Friday, November 20, I went into Supervisor Brandon Damon's office. We were discussing the possibility of me snowplowing for the first upcoming storm of the year. He was joking about, didn't they put the blocks on your pedals, and asked if I needed to sit on his lap to drive my plow truck. I also showed him the second estimate of my back therapy. I had three appointments from 11:11 to 11:16, and had been getting treatment for, and we're discussing how to afford this, it was not in my network, and would be a large amount of out-of-pocket expense. He advised me I needed to talk to Doug Pazno, and he was gone for the day. As Brandon was on the county radio with the Marshfield shop, Katie entered the office and said she was missing Joshua's time for the week. I then said, I'm missing a back massage. I made a statement. I had my paperwork in my hand from the therapy that was the reason, part of the reason I was in Brandon's office to begin with. She then said, excuse me. I then followed my joking remark, but isn't that one of your positions at the county? I thought it was funny, as we just had a meeting the week before praising her, that she was going to hold many positions at the county. She became alarmed. I then stood up, touched her arm, and tried to say, Katie, I was kidding, but she stormed out of the room once. She left the room, Brandon said, oh, I forgot to warn you, you can't joke with her, she got her boss fired at her last job. He stood up and said, I'll go put this fire out. He came back within a minute and said she had already gone home for the day, and we Monday, the 23rd, I asked Brandon at 7:00 AM, I asked Brandon, did you put the fire out? He said, no, the fire's in my office right now, and I read her email to HR, and it's good. I got my orders and left for the day. Around noon, Brandon came out to the field where I was working and asked me to go for a ride. The first thing he said was, you could lose your job over this. We talked for about an hour. I asked, why would I lose my job for this, as I didn't feel it was sexual harassment? I then questioned him on why a couple other employees didn't get in any kind of trouble for asking the 18-year-old summer help, Sarah Griesbach, if she would have sex with fellow employee when I knew she had reported it to Brandon. He then stated, they both should have been fired, but it never made it to HR, and I saved their jobs. A large portion of the Wood County employees are all knowledgeable of this happening. Brandon also claims that this happened on a Friday, and opening weekend of deer hunt was on Saturday. He claims she took yellow legal paper to his deer stand during the weekend and wrote a statement before he even knew there would be an investigation. I feel he read Katie's email and then wrote his email. Monday, I got called to Doug's office to share my, on the November 30th, got called to Doug's office, share my side of the story, what happened, and gave my side of the story. I also asked about the incident that involved Dave, Chris, Sarah, and Brandon. He said he knew nothing about it. He also said he knew nothing about Katie getting her previous boss fired for sexual harassment. I found this odd, he didn't know because Brandon knew. I also brought up several cases of theft and misuse of county property at this time, which I feel contributed to my dismissal. Tuesday, December 1st, I again got called into Doug's office, he said it was looking like termination. We talked again about what happened. During our conversation, he asked me several times to write a letter to resign from the county, it would be easier for me to get a new job. I told him I was not going to write a letter to resign, I did not feel I did anything wrong worth being terminated over. I then gave him multiple examples of harassment I had endured and reported to my supervisors, nothing was done about it. Doug dismissed what I had to say and said he was only worried about the current issue. I was then walked out of the office and out of the building. During my time of being unemployed, I, I had an opportunity for a job at the Town of Rome, and all I needed to do was write a letter of resignation, and then I could be hired, and this means this much to me, that I did not write that letter, I wanted to get this opportunity to come before the board. There was an LP deal at the shop where one of the persons, one of the employees was stealing the LP, and I reported it to my supervisor, they ended up losing their job. The harassment I got from doing the right thing is part of the reason I switched from being a mechanic in the shop is to working out in the field. My time at Wood County, I never had any sexual harassment training, I've always had a perfect work record, I've never been late for work, never been called into the office for anything, never did any damage to any county equipment. I had a good working relationship with the other female employees, Panee, Diane, and Lynn. I guess I feel we all make mistakes, I'm not saying what I did was right, but me being terminated is excessive punishment in this case.
That's time, Mark.
Thank you.
Mr. Kraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. In response to Mr. Eswin's comments, I would refer you to the materials in your packet, including the decision of the impartial hearing officer, which reviewed all of the factual statements Mr. Eswin alleged and determined otherwise. I'm young, I'm still young enough to remember growing up dealing with the playground bullying, and where we learned the message of sticks and stones will hurt my bones. I also remember that Sister Mary Principal didn't want me in her office with the exception of foul language unless there was physical contact involved. Now we fast-forward to today. The good news is, this board had the wisdom, when it adopted the employee handbook, it adopted a paragraph simply explaining what this county means by harassment, in particular, sexual harassment. Regardless of what the perpetrator, Mr. Eswin believes, it's from the viewpoint of what we call the victim. As I say, this is a very simple statement explaining what the federal and state law tell us we have to do. Mr. Eswin says he didn't have training on this policy, but he also told the impartial hearing officer, he did receive the handbook, he never read it, he also told the hearing officer he knew copies of this handbook were in the highway office, and that he chose not to go in there and review it. You heard him reference the unemployment compensation decision. Most of you realize that the unemployment compensation decision is based on rules different than what you have adopted. He admitted he messed up. He argues that it's not a terminable offense. But when you have the kind of comments in the workplace that are so upsetting to an individual, a Wood County employee, and you complicate that with some kind of physical contact, that is in fact a termination offense. contact, that is in fact a termination offense. I would respectfully ask that you adopt a motion to affirm the impartial hearing officer and send a message to our employees that this kind of behavior is not tolerated here in Wood County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. At this point, you've heard the testimony for both of those. There's no opportunity for cross-examination or to ask questions, but the board will deliver it in open session. So amongst ourselves, that deliberation can occur. At the end of that deliberation, it would be in order to have a motion. The motions would generally need to affirm the decision of the independent hearing officer or to overturn the decision and overturn that person to his previous employment. At this point, we'll open that up for deliberation and I will call on you as hands are raised. Do you have any questions, Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second hearing of this solit that I've been through since I've been on the board. And what I find most difficult, and I think some of you might be struggling with also, is the very narrow scope that we are, that we are limited to in not only our findings, but in what action we can take on those findings. Basically, as you mentioned, this was a certification of the rules and essentially all we, all we are allowed to determine is whether or not the hearing, the independent hearing examiner acted within the scope of his authority, in this case it was him, of his authority. Did he sit outside the rules of what he was supposed to do? And secondly, did the, and is the conclusion that he reached, a reasonable conclusion under the rules? His findings, there were actually three findings contained in this, in his, in his decision. The first finding was that, that the action that was taken to dismiss the employee was a reasonable application of existing county policies. That's another level is one finding. His second finding was he could not, because it wasn't any evidence on the record, he could not find that this was consistent or inconsistent with the application of county policy in the past. And then the third thing was that the county employees, the county system were not violated. There were no policies or rules violated in the application of that, of the discipline. So our choices are essentially only to affirm, to define that those decisions were reasonable or not reasonable and take it from there. I mean, that's, that's where we're at right now. And, and I, I don't know, I would be anxious to, I don't think we can go back and say anything that happened below the level of the independent hearing examiner was, it can't even be taken into consideration.
Supervisor Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wonder why we got instructions on this from the supervisor? I mean, nobody asked a question, what can we do or what we can't do. Why was supervisor, you know, telling us all this? I mean, we heard it from both sides. We reread it and now we're being cautioned how to vote? I think that's wrong.
I think the supervisor was just defining the scope, not telling anybody how to vote. Would you like clarification from Mr. Castenholz? Do you want to add anything?
I don't want to give it.
And for further discussion.
The summary that was given by Supervisor Wagner was an accurate summary. And so if anybody has, and whether or not he should have been giving that or not, he elected to, wanted to, wanted to share his understanding and he's done so, it was a correct one. So if you have any specific questions of me as far as procedures or something like that, feel free to ask, but nothing that's been stated at this point is incorrect.
Further questions, comments, deliberation? Supervisor Flanagan.
So in response to that, indicating that this was a determination as how the, how the rules book is done. I know of other incidents in that rules book that we're not sure why it was in there and things like that. So if he can tell me that this was done according to the rule book or the employee's handbook, then I have other questions. Are they right on everything in the handbook?
Supervisor Wagner.
Yeah, it's, no, I was reading what was in your packet is that the, the hearing examiner made the determination and the finding that it was done according to the county rules. That it was the hearing examiner who made that, not us. And basically, what we can do, what I was explaining from my viewpoint and the way I'm going to base my decision on this is whether or not I accept the findings of the hearing examiner, that all the rules were adhered to. And that's the same, that's the same thing that each supervisor will have to do for himself, I think. So, you know, I, you know, I think, I think someone's personal dislike for me is getting into what he was making here.
Supervisor Preymann.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to summarize for my clarity, we are not here to give in the weeds about the actual incident. We are here to strictly look at the independent hearing officer's decision and if he followed the policy driven, not, not the actual incident itself. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ashback.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Chairman. I had incidents in my life where I could have put people in jail for what they have done and the years go by and these people turn off to do good things that are with the community. And my policy is, one of my friends from Madison, he says, we practice forgiveness. It just meant it worked for us and he probably learned something from this and we were probably too. I mean, if this gets, yeah, it seemed very important to him. I still, like I say, I still liked his idea of forgiveness.
Further deliberation, further deliberation. I see no hands going up. All right, at this point, if you have minutes to think about it, at this point then I would entertain a motion from the floor. Supervisor Zerflu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd make the motion that we uphold the findings of the hearing commission.
A motion by Supervisor Zerflu to uphold the IHO decision, and a second by Supervisor I don't know if that, Peter, I'm going to ask you a question here. Is that a discussable motion at this point or, okay, all right, we'll vote and go to the direction. All right, discussion on that, motion again, second. The motion is to uphold the IHO decision? Discussion? I'm going to get the board's, we're going to go to the board on this, okay?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Mahan. Just in a minute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question here and it has to do with the second finding by the independent hearing officer. And, and that seems to indicate to me, and maybe Warren can either support or Peter, but are we going to be setting a precedent here that we are going to be having to follow in similar cases going forward? Because that is a concern. I think I know where I stand on this, but I'm concerned about setting a precedent that we will not or not be able to follow in future. Thank you.
So you're asking a procedural question then, to some extent?
I'm not sure if it's a procedural question. I guess in a way it is because it seems to be clear to me by the second finding that he, if I'm, I'm right on this, he was not able to give a decision whether the action which resulted in the complaint is consistent with similar previous administration of the specific policy. As far as I know, we've never discussed this policy before. We've never had an incident like this. So it occurs to me that by acting on this policy however we do, we will be setting a precedent that we will have to follow in the future. And I think we need to give here for deliberation if that is the case.
That's, I guess I'm a little bit, that's not a fair, that's a fair question. It's not a question of the plaintiff in this case or the county. It's more of a, it's like I said, is it precedential, is it procedural issue? Court Castenholz, you want to weigh in on the bad aspect of this? That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anytime that an employer, and that would include a department head, a, any supervisor or even all the way up to the level of the county board makes a decision with regards to how you're acting on the issue, that is going to create a precedential impact. It doesn't control what happened in the past, but it doesn't impact future decisions and reviews of future decisions by policy, people who are applying policies and reviewing the application of those policies. So yes, it has an impact. It is precedential in a sense, but again, it's not like a court case that completely controls how things are going to play out in the future.
So President, I do follow that or do you want, you have followed, did I answer your question?
Yeah, not specifically. I have questions in my mind. I'm not going to drag this, this out into a session, but.
Supervisor Wagner. Yeah, Supervisor Mahan asked a really great question and I guess I'd like to ask, I'm a little bit confused about the way that, that second thing was written. I'd like to ask Counselor Castenholz, does that mean that there wasn't anything in the record or just simply that there wasn't anything presented into testimony or, or there was no, there was no evidence of any prior decisions? You don't want to get it out?
Yes, I do. I was just nodding my head, looking for the chairman to recognize before I spoke. And so I think it's an answer to all of those questions you were, your statements are yes, that there was nothing in the record for the independent hearing officer, IHO, to review. That may be because there wasn't any record in the past, any other precedents before that, or maybe that someone just hadn't brought it forward and that hearing officer didn't have anything to base it on as far as comparing it with past incidents. I answered that question.
Supervisor Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Supervisor Wagner that this is one of the hardest things that we have to do. You know, we have a responsibility to uphold our policy and I can just tell you, as a female that works in a setting where there are lots of, you know, males running around, we've swung the pendulum way too far in this, you know, we, we have gotten so confounded sensitive about how everybody talks. Sometimes one of the docs will be up at the desk and I'll walk by and I'll say, oh, good morning, Dr. so-and-so. Oh, pat him on the back, please don't turn me in for sexual harassment because I just patted your back. You know, I mean, I just want to make a statement that even though we have a responsibility, I think this is a heads up to just about everybody about how sensitive we have become about this situation. And people joke all the time and I'm not in any way condoning inappropriate behavior because there is inappropriate behavior that goes on, but I just am raising a red flag as let's use some common sense here and let's be reasonable about things. I agree that we have a responsibility to uphold county policy, the policies in our handbooks, but I don't know. I am very concerned about the way our society is going and about how sensitive we've all been and this is not an easy thing to do and I just tell people, please be aware of how sensitive an issue these things are. Not condoning in any way inappropriate behavior, but just encouraging common sense in the work environment. Thank you.
Further discussion or the beginning of the resolution? Supervisor Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I am really sorry to drag you so, but I think this is our obligation here and this is what I look at. I'm not trying to sway anyone one way or the other. I want an objective look at this. And this is what I see and I have to agree with Don, a number of points she made. What if this, going forward, Peter, maybe you can understand, maybe Warren too, what if this is a female that grabbed a guy? How do we look at it? How is it judged by the supervisor? It's a completely different thing. And that's why if you're going to set precedent here, we have to be sure that we can follow it through. This is a big deal. This is an important policy. This is an important policy that we have in this county. We have to make sure that whatever we do here today, we can be consistent going forward. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Preymann.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That number two is very concerning to me and I think the previous supervisor had a good point, but I, I think we need to, for my clarification, when he talks about, I cannot give a decision on whether the action which resulted in the complaint is consistent with similar previous administration of the specific policy. How do I say that? We are not talking about this, we are not here to judge the incident of that. We are here to judge his decision. His decision was he cannot give a decision based on that finding, right?
Correct. That sense would be true.
Okay, so there's really, I think we're getting two issues here. One issue is the actual incident and the other issue is his findings. So I can see where there's some confusion here, but if we're here strictly to look at the independent hearing officer's findings, we really can't, we really can't put anything of the actual event into context here, correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Because if we can, this would in essence be a loophole, in my view.
So I, we haven't met before, kind of, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree with your attempt at summarizing. I know you were giving opinion, asking questions and, and so the, what the hearing examiner was saying there is that you've got three elements and the appellant, Mr. Eswin, needed to show one of these things. And the hearing examiner was saying, he didn't show that second element. He didn't show that there was an inconsistent treatment with past practice, that there was some previous precedent where some female grabbed a male and said that wasn't, just hold on a second and, you know, treated it differently or different male grabbed a female and did something similar. And so there was no precedent there that they had to go on. So he said, I can't overturn the decision that was made earlier that he was reviewing and conducting this hearing on. So that element isn't there. So that's what that hearing examiner, IHO, was saying. And so that's part of, I think, my answer to your question. The other part you were saying is that you don't have the ability to look at the facts of the case. And that's the way I'm seeing it. And I think you, even though I agreed with the summary Supervisor Wagner was giving before, that you're looking at these three decisions, you're also looking at the entire opinion that was given by that IHO. And that IHO did cite the facts in there. And so if you feel that those facts don't support that decision that was made in either of those three aspects of the decision, then you have the ability to overturn it. So that's why I kind of disagreed with that summary you were giving in your question. I hope I've answered your question without being disrespectful.
Supervisor Preymann.
No, very well. That was a, that first point was exactly the, I think a clarification. I see a lot of heads nodding, oh, okay. So thank you for that. That's perfect.
Further discussion, further discussion. A motion on the floor is to uphold the independent hearing officer's decision. That is the motion, we're going to the board and vote. We're going to go. The motion passed sixteen to three to uphold the IHO's decision. Appreciate the deliberate process that occurred today. Parties will be notified in writing of that decision within, I believe it's thirty-one days, if I'm not mistaken. And we proceed in that manner. Peter, do you have any cleanup to that that you need to do? All right, thank you, everybody, for their participation. And we're moving forward in the packet. I'm getting there. Yeah, we're being seventy-nine. I got to move all my emails back because I had these spread out all over the... We're in the middle of a whole bunch of seed resolutions. You guys remember that? Page seventy-nine of the packet, it's a resolution brought forth from the Seed Committee in regard to the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. But I ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution seventeen-six-five to support full funding of the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. Fiscal note, none.
Hamilton, on the motion, Plandetti on the second. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, in terms of synopsis, says to support full funding. You know, I just would encourage that if there's any waste we want or any things that are not, you know... We try to look at outcome-based stuff. You know, is there money being spent that doesn't have the outcome that we need? And I certainly will support this. I love our Great Lakes. But I hope that there is thoughtful deliberation and discussion about how that $300 million is spent because we certainly want to be efficient and effective and all of that. So even though I will support this, I certainly hate abuse and fraud that that $300 million is spent wisely. Thank you.
Supervisor Plandetti.
I assure you, with the Great Lakes Pact, you have the Canadians and the United States. And there's always questions from both sides about spending it on this side of the lake or that side of the lake. And it's really scrutinized. You can be assured that it's properly spent.
Further discussion?
Resolution passed nineteen-zero. Takes us to the following resolution from the Seed Committee, co-sponsored by the Executive Committee. And I would ask the clerk to please read that resolution, which deals with the DAPCAP grant.
This will be Resolution seventeen-six-six to seek county board approval to amend the 2017 Wood County Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection grant budget for unanticipated state aid monies and to appropriate those monies to the DAPCAP grant budget expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the DAPCAP. The adjustment to the budget totals $69,014.
And a motion by Curry and a second by Leighton. Discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. I started to chuckle a little bit because I'm reading this next, the start of the resolution. I actually had somebody call me the other day and said, "I thought weed was only the only color add." And I just got one off. And I said, "We're dealing with that in this particular instance when we're talking about a weed commission." I had to convince them for a while, actually, but they were concerned. So what they have said, and we're not meeting that, is to go ahead and read the resolution.
This will be Resolution seventeen-six-seven to authorize the Seed Committee to appoint a weed commissioner and to enter into a contract with that weed commissioner that sets forth the powers and duties of that position. Fiscal note, no additional funds for contracting with the weed commissioner as the cost therefore would be paid by the landowners.
A motion by Roser and a second by Brian. Discussion? Supervisor Plandetti. You should print more than just that intensive office of paper, I guess. Because I wouldn't get a question.
Let me tell you about weed. No, I tell, and my folks own a hundred-and-twenty-acre farm in Washeira County, and we had a, the town had a weed commissioner. And we had some notches weeds in there, and we were ordered to take them out. They were buster. And we had to go in there and do it ourselves. Being a town official now, we also, in the town of Grand Rapids, we have a weed commissioner. And we appoint one every year, and that person is confirmed as an appointee. I don't see how a county can appoint a weed commissioner to act on behalf of the county to go on private land and tell the people that they have to get rid of those weeds and not pay anybody, not to pay them. There's no money involved here. So if nobody's going to pay that weed commissioner, I mean, we didn't have to pay our weed commissioner. We were subject to the law, and we had to get rid of that. And if we didn't, they would send somebody in there and clean it up for us. So what good is a county weed commissioner? And, you know, I just say, how do you control this, if I'm saying the laws?
Supervisor Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I anticipated that there would be several questions about this, and I asked Shane to stay and explain that. But I will, first of all, say that we are trying to get something done prior to the boom in seeding of the wild parsnips, which you've had a presentation on before. And you understand that it's a nasty region. With your permission, I'll ask Shane to answer the question.
Explain the process shortly, as shortly as we can. I sent through the presentation so we can summarize that.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so this process we've been through is really ultimately about education, making people aware where is, where it's gone in the county. We're starting to get a pretty good handle of where it is. We have a lot of volunteer efforts and a lot of donated funds already to address this through local people doing the spraying. What you need to realize is, these are chemicals. You need to be a licensed applicator to do this. So by appointing a county weed commissioner under the oversight of the Seed Committee, what we're doing is, we're basically making that person sort of the liaison or the lead contact person in orchestrating, going out and finding people to do the spraying, actually maybe getting some people to do the hand sprayer applications and spot spraying. And anything that person does is subject to review by our Oversight Committee. As part of the land conservations mission with this weed, we are mapping and tracking where it is. We're also going to be mapping and tracking where treatments are done and following up with that. So once it's eradicated, it will also be noted on our mapping where it was and how it was eradicated. The issue of going onto private land, that will not happen without the landowner's consent. We are hoping to do that treatment via donated funds and donated chemical and not have an expense to the landowner. But if the landowner outright refuses to have us take care of it for them, we're going to require them to take care of it on their own. That's kind of the way the first resolution was written. And same protocol with the appointing of a county commissioner.
Any other questions?
I'd like to stay there for our questions. Supervisors, further discussion?
Yes, so does Portage County have one? Because they're involved in this, and they also have a notches weed ordinance?
They have the identical resolution to us with maybe a few word changes, whatever. They are pulling at today's, their county board meeting, on a very similar resolution to appoint a weed commissioner in Portage County as well. We've been here allowing our efforts with what Portage County is doing.
So I know that a lot of this is, well, if organic people that have organic gardens and things like this don't want any pesticides or stuff like that, that, you know, that's who we won't grow on their land. But, you know, we have a lot of cranberries. We're different, I think, than Portage County. We have a lot of cranberry growers. And I'm sure they don't want these pesticides in the ditches and get in the water and contaminate the cranberries. And so the weed commissioner is going to say, "Well, you've got this there and that, and we're going to go in and do it." I just think this is premature, and I'm voting against it.
Further discussion? Supervisor Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that very first paragraph that we have here, my question would be, if you're authorizing the Seed Committee to appoint a weed commissioner, how would you go about doing this on the committee level? Or maybe you're not really quite sure how you would do that. But if you're looking at the whole county, do you appoint one person? Or are you looking at possibly a staff member? Have you given it any thought at all?
That's a good question, so Shane will do that.
Yeah, we have looked at current staff. We don't feel that's appropriate, efficiently, to go after this. We're looking at more private representation, people that are commercial license spreaders. We've had some people offer their services free of charge without any obligation from a financial standpoint from the county. In my opinion, if they want to do it, more power to them.
At that point, just a second, Shane. At that point, Dennis next. Because this is, I think that's a pretty good question. I don't want you to add into the debate. Dennis, do you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering if they're going to advertise this one way or the other, this newspaper?
Specifically, the question is, how would you...
How would you fulfill this position?
So far, we have volunteered that's willing to do it. We don't have to advertise. But if that person decides they would not want to do it, we would obviously announce it and try and pursue somebody else.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion? Further discussion? I see that.
I have trouble with, there we go. That resolution passed eighteen-one. Thank you. Takes me to the minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee of June 5th, on page eighty-two, eighty-three, a sign-in sheet on eighty-four, the Joint Legislative Committee meeting held up at the airport in Mozzenee, page eighty-five, and six, the monthly report to their committee by Child Support Director ruling on eighty-seven, the monthly letter of comments or report from Court Council Castenholz on eighty-eight, notice of injury in the claim on eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one, another update, letter to the board from Court Council Castenholz on open meeting law, specificity required for agenda items on ninety-two and ninety-three. Brings us to the minutes of the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee. They're beginning on page ninety-four, five, six, and seven. You have the Parks Construction Supervisors Report and various reports from the Parks, various Parks employees and enforcement, beginning on ninety-eight and running through page one oh six. We have, and also, and as a delegate, we have, page one oh seven in the packet, we have a special presentation coming up here by Chad with regards to Powers Bluff project possibly going forward. There was a fair amount, a number of pages of supplemental information provided by Supervisor Winch that was in the packet intended to kind of follow page one oh seven there, the additional financial fiscal information involving the county and maybe particularly this project. Did all of you receive that additional information by amendment agenda? Okay, just wanted to make sure. And I guess with that, and the ten minutes,
Okay, before I do... Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but I can't even take it out of the... Hold it up to your mouth. Because we want the public to hear you.
Okay, how's that?
Good.
All right. All right, so basically, the reason why I'm here, as I'm sure you're all aware, is in regards to our last TERC meeting. We had a resolution that came before this board last month, and it was sent back to committee. And it was in regards to the application of a stewardship outdoor recreation grant. And so our committee sent the same, basically the same resolution back to this, yourself supervisors for voting on that. As well as that, they wanted me to do a presentation of this, which I actually want to thank Supervisor Winch. We don't always agree on things, but I think it was very, it is very beneficial for the entire board to see what this project is all about and answer those questions. So we will get into the presentation here. So the name of it, obviously, is the Powers Bluff County Park Development Project. Many of you are probably aware, depending on when you came on the county board, but as well as being citizens of Wood County, you kind of know the history. I'm going to go through that real quick. So back in the early 2000s, there's a lot of discussion and some arguments as far as how Powers Bluff was going to be managed. At that time, there was actually a timber sale that was set up for the purpose of managing that property through different forestry techniques that are very commonplace that we use on other places such as our county forests. In addition to that, we are also looking at creating a kind of an educational case, showing proper forest management versus non-proper, which was the case kind of to the north of the property and the hundred-and-twenty acres to the north of Powers Bluff. With that said, once all those trees were marked, a lot of interest grew from that, from different sources. Some from the environmental end of things as far as trying to maintain that park as a, basically a nature preserve. If you've ever been up there in the springtime, you obviously know that it's a very neat place to be in the springtime with all the different ephemerals and spring plants and things like that. And the reason that it maintains that flora is because of the canopy that covers all of those. And basically, those plants need shade to survive. And once those openings are created, which would have happened through that timber sale, then other species start out competing those ephemerals. So that was one group that came out. It actually, a lot of those interested individuals formed, and that is when the Friends of Powers Bluff was created, around that time. In addition to that, there's a very historical piece to this park. And again, you may be aware of this, but in the early 1900s, nineteen oh three or so to nineteen thirty, there is actually a fairly large-size ceremonial community up there from four different native tribes from this area. Ho-Chum, Padua, Ojibwa. tribes from this area, Ho'ochan, Padawami, Ojibwa, and Menominee. Individuals from all those four tribes were actually, they actually lived on the southern base of this, what is now a park. There is currently two cemeteries. There's also a couple ceremonial dance rings up on the top of the hill, as well as a few historical trails and things like that. So those individuals also came out when we were looking at basically changing the complexion of that park with that timber sale. So what happened? With all that discussion, we basically, the county basically decided, we're going to form a long-range master plan committee, and we're going to hire a consultant to do that. And so in 2003, Shriver Anderson was hired for that purpose, and financially, that was all done through Wood County, Ho'ochan Nation, Padawami, and the Friends of Powers Bluff all donated towards that long-range master plan. And obviously, they also had interested parties in that as well. I apologize. So these are just a few of the, actually a few of the pages over the long-range master plan. I already highlighted the cultural history up there. In addition to that, there's also 70 acres of the eastern border of that park is actually a state, it's entitled Powers Bluff Maplewood State Natural Area. And this is a designated, state natural area, designated, there is a difference between designated and dedicated. Dedicated, that is actually a legal term, and it is on the deed itself. Designated just shows that we are practicing management techniques, essentially kind of a hands-off technique to ensure continuation of the ephemerals and things like I talked about earlier. Okay, so that's just a little map of the existing 160-acre parcel in the eastern 70 acres is, is a state natural area. In addition to those two areas, obviously recreation is a very big draw, specifically winter recreation. Powers Bluff being the highest point in Wood County, and I believe it's around the 13th highest point in the state, it obviously lends itself well to terrain-based activities. So since the 1950s, I believe, winter recreation activity has been very, very important to that area, very important to the citizens of Wood County. Currently, we have snow tubing. We have four runs of snow tubing, downhill ski hill, not very large, but it is a very good beginner hill. A lot of people start here, and then they hit the bigger slopes. We also have a shelter building. Doesn't get a lot of use in the summer months. It is our winter warming house, as well as just picnicking, hiking, things like that. So day use is very popular as well. So as I mentioned, the long-range master plan, it was actually completed in 2005, which was many years ago, I realize that, but it is something that has always been on the radar screen of our department and our oversight committees as far as trying to follow through with those recommendations. This might be hard to see, but these are basically the members that were involved at that time as far as the planning committee. You recognize a few of the, a few of the county board supervisors are still part of this board, so they have a lot of history in there as well. But like I mentioned, we had representation from Padawami, Ho'ochan, as well as the county board, and then also just concerned, concerned citizens within Wood County as well. The mission statement to that, basically is preserving and protecting. Powers Bluff County Park is a unique natural, cultural and recreational resource. The long-term vision is to protect it for future generations of Wood County residents so they may, so they may enjoy the park for years to come. And with that statement, here's the initial site plan that came with that long-range master plan. But with that statement, basically, there were two, two scenarios that were outlined within that long-range master plan. Number one, which was the preferred recommendation, was to actually acquire property to the north of the existing 160 acres and to really get a lot of the traffic off of the top of the hill where a lot of those sensitive areas are. But as, in addition to that, really utilizing the terrain in this area and forwarding and developing different outdoor recreational opportunities. And as you're aware, in, in 2012, and this is actually, this came out prior to that. So in addition to our long-range master plan, we also, as a department, we kind of rely on our five-year open spaces plan. We try to do this every, every five years. As you can see, 2011 was the last update, and we're actually starting the process right now to update that. But in the last 2011 update, one of the, one of the real main things when it came to winter recreation, feedback from that, and this is available on our website, or if you need a copy, feel free, but really was to maintain and develop what we have in Powers Bluff, and that is for the recreational aspect of that. So this is also a driving aspect for moving this plan forward. So in 2012, that property was acquired by Wood County, and it was done with no money transaction whatsoever from Wood County. We actually received some funds, but it was through a land transaction, a trade. And that trade was for some county forests, which was in the Seneca, Seneca area, for that property. So it was actually in a very ideal situation. We were able to accomplish a piece, a very large piece of this long-range master plan, and that was the acquisition of the 223 acres, and it was done so without any, any monetary need. So step one, I guess, or step two, whatever, whichever step you want to look at, but this is one of the very large, large steps and hurdles that we have to get over. So in 2012, that was accomplished. Since that time, as you can see, this is kind of a site plan that was put together. We have been busy doing a lot of just planning for not only the existing park, the 160-acre piece, but also the 223 acres to the north of that. And we'll get into that a little bit. One of the large pieces of this whole plan, and obviously the largest piece of the price tag, is this multi-use shelter building. And if I were to go up one more slide, I don't know if you can see that, but right in the middle, basically at the property line between those two properties, you can see the multi-use shelter building. What we would like to do is essentially construct a building, a much larger functional building, and it would be multi-use, year-round. It would definitely, and we'll get into the different uses here, but it would definitely serve a whole facet of user groups. In addition to that, we would like to enter the park or enter that area from the north, which would be highway end, county highway end to the north. And so that is approximately, you know, it's 280s deep, so a quarter mile, but when you look at the curves and everything, it's probably about a .6-mile entrance road. So that would be part of it, as well as a larger parking lot at that location as well. You can see the red and blue areas in addition to that, and that's a trail system that we are continuing to plan for and move forward with that as well, and I'll get into that a little further. So this is the multi-use shelter building. This would be a front view as you're coming from the north, entering to the base of the tube and ski hill. And this is the floor plan. I didn't mention, but I do have handouts for the supervisors anyways, and there's also some renderings out in the hallway. But essentially, there's, there's three sections of this building. If you see that longer walkway coming to the center, that's actually entering what we call the atrium. And that area would be more of an open-air concept. It would actually be usable by all park users, so throughout the year, individuals who are coming to bike or hike or fish or ice skate or whatever they're going to be doing throughout the year, they would actually be able to come into this location. They'd have access to restrooms. There'd be some tables in there for use. We'd obviously have some, some grills and things like that for people to use as well. The only time that it would not be useful by the general public is if this section were to be reserved for a certain event or function, but most of the time it wouldn't be. In addition to that, the longer, bigger section, that is what we would have as the events room slash warming house. So in the winter months, this would essentially be replacing our older, you know, our older shelter building. It's very unique, and we're definitely going to keep that and cherish that and use it for different, different cultural center, nature center, things like that. But it really is somewhat outdated, and it's not large enough for what we need it for. Just to give you an example, there are some weekends, we have three, three sessions for tubing up at Powers Bluff. You know, seating in that building is about 150 maximum with our picnic tables, and we'll have 200 people per session. So if you, if you think about that, you know, in between sessions, let's say our 10 to noon, noon to two sessions, if we have 200 people for the first session, the second session, people are coming, trying to find a parking spot, trying to fit into that location, we could have as many as 400 people at one time, and that's just for the, just for the tubing slash skiing. So size-wise, it's actually sized for a 300-person event, a sit-down event. So if we had some seating and some stand-up, we could definitely have even more than that, more than that number. In addition to that, you can see that we have designed it for different events. We've got a stage area, and that would be for a band, DJ, what have you, for weddings or, or different events. We've got a kitchen. The kitchen will not be a full-service kitchen. It will, however, be set up and designed for larger caterers to come in. So a lot of counter space, a lot of outlets, things like that, refrigerators, freezers, storage, restrooms. The concession, which is near the atrium in the middle, that is actually, it has access from both the warm side and the unconditioned side in the atrium, and that would be for our concessions for different events, primarily for the winter months, but if we have a, a bike race or a cross-country running race or something like that, it would also be accessible from the atrium. Attached to that is more storage, never have enough of that, as well as a ticket booth. And that ticket booth would be obviously for the winter months. So opposite of that longer area, there is another restroom, and that would be available for the atrium users and general park users. In addition, a meeting room slash classroom. And really, that is going to be designed for the purpose of environmental education. And so there is going to be a lot of surfaces, some sinks, cabinetry. We really want to be a host to as many different school groups as we can to get them out, not only in the winter months to enjoy the hill, but also just to get them outside to learn about the environment, you know, have, have all the Wood County, as well as our visitors from wherever, come out and really explore Powers Bluff in its entirety. The lower level? If you couldn't wait till the end, yeah. Sorry. The lower level, as you can see, it's kind of on the side of everything. That would be primarily for the winter months. It would, it would house our rentals. Rentals would be for downhill skis, snowboards, ice skates, and snowshoes as well. In addition to that, we'd have, it's kind of cut off on there, but we have a first aid room, lockers for users of that hill, as well as a small break room for personnel, and a restroom as well. So that's the lower, lower story, and like I said, that would primarily be in the winter months that that would get used. Just a shot, kind of of the atrium, give you an idea of the scale and things like that. Obviously, we want to expose the hill as much as possible just to create that environment and that you get a nice visual in the middle. And these are just a few of the different side, side elevations. You can also tell that there's a lot of outside room, and I think that's very important as well for different functions, just utilizing covered hardscape basically for overflow or people that just want to get outside of the building and utilize that for different events as well. So this is, I basically discussed this already, but 300-person event hall, we're just talking about the different sections here. It would be reservable, weddings, family reunions, class reunions, sporting events, that would come with the restrooms, kitchen area, and concession area if needed. The 70-person meeting room, again, school groups, environmental education, as well as business meetings, anything that would need a, need a little smaller environment. The atrium, again, open to the general public for the most part unless it were to be reserved, and the lower level for the, for the winter months. So there are, there are different fee areas here. Obviously, we have to, you know, as you're all aware, our tax levy needs are not increasing. So this is something that we definitely have in mind when we designed this and we planned for this. We talked about some of the fee areas, and that would be the rentals of the building itself. We also have, and I'll get into numbers here, but for the tubing and skiing, there are lift tickets, obviously. The new trail system that we're looking at putting in, and that is single-track biking as well as cross-country ski trail and hiking trail. Times of the year, that would be a fee area as well. But the general public, if they wanted to come out and enjoy the park, this is just a list of things that they could do as well. I kind of went by that map pretty quick, but other, other things that we're looking at implementing at this location. About a three-acre fishing pond, and that location would be actually, there's a sand pit, non-metallic, non-metallic mine sand pit at the location right now on the new property. And that would be dug out, that general area, the fill would be utilized for construction and roadway and things like that, but the result, the three-acre pond would be stocked with fish for fishing. A sledding hill in the whole construction realm of things. We really want to give an option to the smaller kids out there because that tube hill is somewhat intimidating and can be a little dangerous for little, real little kids. So that's another option for the sledding. Ice skating, again, near the multi-use shelter building, we'd like to just have a smaller outdoor rink that we would control in-house as far as flooding and, and all that good stuff, but that would be a part of it. And I think I mentioned the other areas as well. So nuts and bolts of it, what is this going to cost and how are we going to get the funding, which is really the, you know, main reason that I'm here is just to explain this process. So when we had the building designed, it was designed by Design Unlimited, which is a marshfield company. They did a great job, in my opinion, as far as getting the, the product that we were looking at, functional, but also basically a destination where for years to come, it's going to be a very special place for, for different events. But they also did a cost estimate. And so as you can see, it's kind of broken down into different areas, but it is about a $3.1 million investment, and that's the multi-use shelter building alone. So about $3.1 million for that, and you can see the breakdown. One of the things I did want to highlight, the geothermal, you know, we, we really want to make this building, we may not go the step as far as weed certification, things like that, but we do really want to make this obviously a, a maintenance-friendly and a, basically reduce the annual costs. And so we are looking at different areas. Geothermal is on there, and obviously it costs another $120,000, but that's one option. Window placement, all of those, I guess, items that we want to look at as well. So when we're looking at the total project estimate, and when you hear, you know, our capital campaign, a lot of times that $4.5 million is basically, or excuse me, the top portion, the $4.3 million is kind of the total that you will hear. And so that has the entrance road slash parking lot, that was an estimate that was given by the highway department. Like I said, it's a .6-mile entrance road as well as 100, approximately 150-stall parking lot. So it's a long stretch, $824,000. The multi-use shelter building, like I mentioned, $3.1 million. Two other items that I think is very important if we're going to really maximize this site and maximize it by a number of users, but also the potential revenue that we would bring in, and that is snowmaking equipment. And I'll touch base on that a little bit, but also ski and tube hill lights, which would enable us to do, you know, Friday nights, possibly go into Saturday evenings as well. The bottom portion, these are just, these are other areas that need to be done, but it's not a part of our capital campaign per se, but the trail development, playground equipment, ice skating rink, sledding hill, maintenance building, I didn't touch on that, but our maintenance building currently on top of the hill, in order to restore that area and kind of bring it back to its original state, we are looking at basically removing it and replacing it down at the, at the base of the hill, as well as the three-acre fishing pond. So that total, $217,000. So obviously, it's good to know what, what are our expenses going to be on an annual basis. Once this facility is constructed, how are we going to maintain that facility? You know, this is not by any means all-inclusive. I tried to get as much of the nuts and bolts as I could. There's always intangibles here and there. But when we're looking at personnel costs and just the general But when we're looking at personnel costs and just the general maintenance costs that would be associated with this multi-use shelter building, this is basically what I came up with, approximately $78,000 on an annual basis. Now, these are also estimates that are based off of estimated usage of this park. So obviously, if we don't, if we don't have the snowmaking equipment ability in having more of a fixed season, this would reflect on expenses as well as revenues as well. Annual estimated revenues. And I'll get into a little bit as far as how did I come up with these? A lot of it is just data that we have internal as far as shelter usage, trail usage, things like that. Some of it, I did have to rely on some of our neighbors as far as cost for, for different operations and usage as well. So as you can see, the tow tickets, 8100 tickets. And I'm just going to slip down a slide here. Couple of them, sorry about that. So, you know, I'll go back to that as well. Powers Bluff tow ticket sales. This isn't real recent. This is basically just a three year snapshot showing relatively good years versus not so good years in 2014, 15. And obviously, you're all aware, we've, we've had very inconsistent snowfalls within the last several years and, as well as temperatures. And so this kind of just shows you what, what the potential would be. I have 8,000 annually. I think that could actually be a lot higher, but we did see that in a good snow year of 2013, 14. Let me just go up a couple here again. Okay, so as you can see, the, the estimated usage of the multi-use shelter building itself, it shows the hall rental, meeting room rental, atrium rental, and then the trail passes. And I want to get into the trails a little bit more. I had mentioned it, so we're looking at seven to 10 miles of single track trail. And in, in looking at this and talking to the experts in the field, if you're going to attract individuals from outside of the area, really the 10 mile mark is kind of, kind of the area where you want to be looking. People don't want to travel a long distance if it's only a two mile loop trail or something like that. So 10 miles is, is our goal. Hopefully, we can get that with the terrain and I think, I think that's possible. In addition to that, the cross country ski trail, we'd like to do approximately five miles of that. And there too, you know, the longer we can get, the more terrain, the more visitors and trail passes that we're going to sell at that point. This is very hard to see, but this is actually included in our annual report on an annual basis. This is the shelter use and it's 2016 data for all of our shelters within our, in our park system. So in 2016, there were 381 reservations within all of our parks. Necco Park being the only year round has 123. That's by far the most that any of those have reserved. The bottom portion, again, it's very hard to see, but if you look at the very bottom line above the yellow, it's weddings. And I think that's, that's going to be a very key component of this facility. 104 weddings we hosted in 2016. And that was through, through all of our shelter buildings. So the capital campaign. As of January 1st, and this was all, all of these processes have gone through the HERP committee, obviously, they've, they've given approval. This capital campaign, actually, I had, I had to bring this forward and get permission to solicit money because that is something that needs to be done procedural wise. And it was approved by the HERP committee. So I'll just kind of run through it. Capital campaign, we'd like to have a two year capital campaign. Starting January 1st, it actually started January 1st, 2017. Funding sources being pursued include, and those are current and ongoing, personal donations, local business donations, private and public foundations, and Wisconsin DNR grants. So with that being said, you know, our, our, my oversight committee has already said, you know, we like the concept, find the money. And that's what I'm trying to do. In addition to that, all donations, this kind of gets into specifics. All donations will go directly to a Wood County non-lapsing fund and that was set up by Mike. So we do actually have a non-lapsing capital projects fund where any donation would go into this. You know, there's, there's the mindset out there. Occasionally I hear, you know, why would, why would I donate directly to Wood County? I pay taxes, things like that. You know, hopefully, sorry, hopefully the, this gives them a little bit of peace of mind in that, you know, it's not just going into the general fund. It's going to a specific account that is designated for this, for this project. In addition, all, all donations, consult your tax advisor, but all donations to a governmental entity are tax deductible, which is a, which is a good thing for people to hear. Donors, $100 or more will be recognized via social media. $1,000 or more will be included on the donor wall and that would be located in the multi-use shelter building atrium. So we will have a dedicated wall that will identify and thank those donors of $1,000 or more. In addition, you probably saw this in last month's packet or two months ago, but the donor recognition, it does give different tiers as far as donations. And those tiers would recognize individuals, businesses, and the size of the recognition would be attributed to the amount given. Our oversight committee, or my oversight committee, also approved potential naming sources and naming rights. As you can see, they are suggested gift amounts. I've been told that they seem a little high, but they are suggested. And we could definitely talk about and discuss those, those dollar amounts. But if people are or businesses are interested in naming rights of the entire building or different parts of the building, that is an option as well. So full circle, this is a resolution that is basically before you. And I wanted to touch base on this a little bit, but I also more specifically want to talk about the actual grant process. So the, this is obviously for state of Wisconsin outdoor recreation grant programs. It does not specifically name the stewardship fund, stewardship grant. And that, the reason for that is that once this application is handed into the DNR, they're kind of the facilitator, there are actually federal grants that are available as well. So the LWCF land and water conservation fund, the state stewardship, there's also recreational trails fund. So there's several different grant funds that come from this one single application. And that's why it doesn't specifically state stewardship. It is a requirement in the application that this, this or a similar resolution be passed by the entire county board, essentially stating that we will have dollars available for this matching grant. With that said, there's, there's a no point in time that I or our committee has asked for borrowing. We are essentially, I'm essentially asking to submit this application in, basically submit this application. The reason that I'm doing it before we have the funds is number one, commonly, these larger grants take like a two year application process. So initially, you'll get, you'll get the rejection notice. And then at that point, they will give you comments or I would receive comments as far as how can we improve this grant process? How can we improve this? So I guess the first reason why I would do this prior to having the funds is just that, anticipating that we would get that initial rejection notice and then apply once again next summer or next spring, May 1st. The second thing, and the wording is very specific on here, and Peter, Peter was a reference for that. But if you go to the be it further resolved, it is quite specific that it allows me to sign, sign agreements, development, maintenance agreements as long as we have necessary funding in place. So what's the process? So May 1st is the application deadline. I actually did apply. I sent an application, but it is incomplete without this resolution. If this resolution is sent in, it is a complete packet at that point. Typically, for the stewardship grant, it's about a three to four month turnover. So we can expect probably in August, sometimes September, depending on the, how fast they are. We can expect to receive a notice, yes, you received the grant, no, you did not receive the grant. In addition to that, any grant application that's over $200,000, it actually has to jump up to the next layer, which would go through the joint finance committee. So that actually adds more time to it. Wisconsin City of Wisconsin Rapids actually recently received one from last May 1st. It actually took a full year. It wasn't just stewardship, but it was also different grants. So we can anticipate, you know, from three to four months to actually a full year before we see, you know, did we get that grant or not? So once we receive it, we have a 30 day window to send back a letter, sign that letter acknowledging that yes, we, we accept and we receive this stewardship grant or whatever grant we receive. So there's a window of time, so 30 days, we can decide thanks, but no thanks. In addition to that, once we receive it, there's a two year construction window. So from the time that we send that confirmation letter back, there's a two year, two year window that we can or cannot start construction on that. Again, another two years, if we do not utilize any of that grant, and typically we've always just cashed out the money upfront and then got reimbursed once that project is done. But if we do not start this project and we do not expend any of the DNR's funds, basically there's a mutual agreement, letter, letter for letter stating that we are no longer interested in these funds. And I spoke with our DNR representative just as recently as last year and this doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen because county budget boards change, county budgets in general change. There might be a, a large donor that dropped out for whatever reason. So there are situations that there's a grant application that has been confirmed and they back out of that. No harm, no foul, as long as you're not, you're not using those funds that were granted to you. So I realize there is risk here and, you know, Supervisor Wench, he has a lot of good concerns as far as borrowing and things like that. My head's not in the sand. I realize we've been borrowing a lot as far as the county board. But I also know that if we're going to complete this project, which I hope we do, we are relying on grant money and we need to start that process. So I think that might be all I have. Okay, I'm ready for questions.
First of all, let's get this, we don't have this resolution on the floor yet. All right, page 107 of your packet. And, and I think it would make sense to have Chad answer questions directed at him during the discussion on the resolution. So if I could ask the clerk to please read the resolution?
Sure, this will be Resolution 17-6-8 to become eligible for state of Wisconsin outdoor recreation grant programs funding. Fiscal note, $3,215,000 for grant eligible portions of the Powers Bluff multi-use shelter, shelter building, entrance road, and park sign.
And motion by Dry and second by Pocant. Discussion. Or do we just wear everybody out? So I just can't, too, I'm like, so I have a two black guy here, boy. Supervisor Wench.
Thank you. First, I'd like to talk about some questions pertaining to the resolution. The first, whereas says that we will continue to follow Powers Bluff law management plan. I think that we need to do is establish the dollar amount first and I hold in my hand the summary of what we were going to do at one time. And in that, it says that we have two. You should have all received that packet of information, by the way. We should probably get that to you by the time you got there. Thank you. Anyway, it says here, two hands on the above list do not have a cost estimate attached to them. They will raise the grant total considerably. Beyond that, we have snowmaking and also there's no cost of a well. The total here is $6,100,000. Yet on your project cost summary, you're telling us it's going to be $4,566,000. I think we need to establish the dollar amount and what we're actually going to do and what it's going to cost before we pass the resolution, if that's what we intend to do. That's just one of my several other.
Sure, you're on a roll, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, are we in order or do you want to, Chad, to answer that?
Well, you know, those are my concerns with, with that particular issue. But it goes back to what I said earlier is that these grants are not free. We all know that. That's money that's sent to the DNR by the taxpayers and now it's going to come out of our left pocket rather than our right pocket. The other side from that, we're saying that we're going to supplement this grant if we receive it at 50/50. Well, they're going to spend $3 billion, then we're going to spend $3 billion the way I see it.
You know, that would be the total?
What's the total?
The $3 million is the total, so it'd be half, half and half of that.
Oh, not doubled, 3.2.
So what you're saying then is that you'll get a grant for 150 and you'll put 150 to total three. Is that what you're saying?
1.5 and 1.5, yes.
That's not what it says. It says that we're going to get a grant for $3,215,000.
We already have grant eligible portions.
That's the way I read it.
Well, if that's, yeah, that's not the way that it's supposed to be interpreted, interpreted. Basically, and that's a good point, I didn't touch on that. So you're probably wondering, well, the total project is 4.2 million or whatever that, that's the.
4.566.
4.5 million and the grant is only for that. Well, this, these specific grants are only, they are very specific items that you can apply for. The stewardship in particular is nature based. So it actually, it only covers portions of this project. It doesn't, it does not include all of them. So the additional money would obviously have to be made up through donations or other means.
Well, that needs to be clarified, I would think, before we go any further.
Supervisor Pocant, I think to clarify, we've done a lot of these in the past. The 3.215 million is, is a total cost of those eligible projects. The next portion of there, it says source of money. It shows that 50% of that 3.2 million is county dollars. And that's typically the way we write those. If that clarifies that total versus why it doesn't say 1.6 there or 1.61.
Well, you know, I don't see it as that, but that's me, I guess. The other side of that, and part of the reason I sent off this information, and I'll go to some of that. First one is the Wood County debt at the present moment. And I'm sure you all read it, or at least hope you did. But it says they have a current outstanding debt balance of 218. In talking to Mike Martin, we have some other commitments. And in reality, at the end of 2017, we will be close to $30 million borrowed. And if you look at the next report we had is the Wood County, another one for Wood County debt, that means that we're paying a debt payment of $3,170,000 a year. The other thing that I think is really crucial is the, the letter that was addressed to me asking how much the payments would be on a $3 million loan. In that, it says it would be $330,000 a year. If you look at your revenue projections, the difference between the revenue and expenses comes out to about $50,000 margin, not as $50,000 profit. That does not pay $330,000, that leaves us $280,000 short. Then if you look at your revenue statement. Parks and Forests revenues and expenses from the past and then Mike has brought that up to date to 2016. If you look at that, we have a net tax levy in 13, 620, 2014 we get 614, 2015 we get 585, and 2016 is 800,000, 803,174. Now, if we borrow this money, we're going to be adding another $2.8 million to, or 280,000, I'm sorry, to a total. That means we're going to be pushing somewhere near a million dollars a year that we're spending on Parks and Forestry. Personally, I don't think we can afford that. The other, one other point I'd like to make is that if we continue to do this, if we got a bunch of problem right now, we're already talking about a real tax, increasing the sales tax, et cetera. But if we're going to try and stay at a neutral tax levy, we won't be able to do that. We're going to be left with four choices. We can increase taxes, we can cut services, we can lay people off, or all of these. We can increase taxes, we can cut services, we can lay people off, or all of the above. In my opinion, it makes no sense at all to borrow money to lose more money, if that's where I see this project going. Personally, I'd like to see it developed, and I'm not against the development, but we have to make sure that we finance it somehow different than what you're doing. If it's a good thing you're going out for donations, then hopefully we can get enough of them. Personally, I won't go for any more tax levy. If we can get the donations and put it together, that's fine, but if we can't, I don't think we're going to be going in. Thank you.
Supervisor Angel.
Yeah. Supervisor Angel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you please clarify for me? This resolution is simply to authorize the application for the grant. It does not commit us totally to doing this. We have to first get the grant and see what it is, and then see what the other options are for financing the rest of it. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's why Peter had specifically put that in the language. It allows me to sign appropriate documents if there's, I'm just, I want to read this, "Subject to obtaining the necessary financing as well as reimbursement from the State Stewardship Fund Program." So, those are all great points, Bill, but I'm not bringing a borrowing resolution before you.
Supervisor Clendane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very much for this because it does go out into the community and ask for money. I think we have a great park system in this county, and I think we should improve it. I'm an original member of the Friends of Powers Bluff. There was five of us started it, and we saw the potential here, and I think it's great. I would like to see this vote be unanimous. It is not a borrowing thing here, because it tells people that are out there that want naming rights, they want to do it, that this board is behind it. If we have a close vote, that's not going to be good, because the people will say, ah, I'm not approving that. Your board ain't behind it. I'm behind us in improving Powers Bluff. So, I'm going to vote for it, and I wish other people would too. Thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Roser.
Thank you very much. The question I had was, there's no fireplace in that. You know how much I love fireplaces. So, I was disappointed not to see a fireplace in plan, so I know, I was going to say, maybe that's my name even wrong. I need to put a fireplace in. But I agree 100% that I will support this, because I am all for bringing people into the community. And we have these wonderful parks with an S, and so I am going to support this, because I think that it would add to bringing people to Wood County. I've long been a proponent of putting lights and snow, you know, and if you look at this project cost, I don't see one place here that it says tax levy dollars. I mean, I understand that funded by Wood County, that $217,000, but that can, you know, be covered with capital, and, you know, you've got a good budget there. And if we bring more people in, then we, it's a money-making thing, and I totally support this. But I agree with Bill. We have, I don't, so don't pass out.
I'll swing by the fireplace.
And I'll bring the AED, and then I'll resuscitate you. But the thing about it is, is that I think people will get behind this. I think people will see that we have a gem. When you look at the history of this, it's just a phenomenal history. And going to some of these tribes and really promoting this, I think is going to be a real plus for our county. So, I agree with Bill. If we support this, and it's not a borrowing resolution bill, it's just an application process of a bill, of, too many bills on this committee. And so, I encourage people to support this, because I just think this is a gem, and I think we can capitalize on this in our community. And I think the grants and donations are going to be significant, so that we don't have to go out and borrow. We can do this with the way you found it here. So, thank you for the presentation. It was very meaningful.
Supervisor Bry.
I know that being from Marshville, we're known as the Dukes of Deaf, but we've been involved in a couple of fundraisers, and we applied about two years ago to build a brand-new library. And people thought that we needed to find $7 million. Well, it started out at $9 million, and then we reduced it to $7 million. And we put it onto a group to go out and fundraise, and I think the number we had was between $5 and $7 million. Guess what? We got to $5 million. So, if you're looking at a $1.5 million project here, it can be done. If we can raise $5 million in our community to build a library, I'm sure that Tony can raise a $1.5 million to build this great hill. And I think not applying for this is totally wrong. And I know, I know we're accused of borrow, 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 but this is a, this is a long generational project. This is something that should be done. And that's what we thought about the library, and that's what we think about the STEM building. And we're not afraid to do this, and I don't think the county should be afraid either. And Donna's right, we aren't asking for money. We're not asking for you to do anything with this. Just give Chad the chance to get the money. And I think that's the only way to look at it.
And then Supervisor Radom, then Supervisor Wagner, and then everybody else. Do Supervisor Clendane?
This comes from my 35 years in 7th grade. With our county updated their park system with the Bruce Mound development, they did, that took us away. Something like this, I'm sure would bring many schoolgoers back. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay. Then Supervisor Wagner. Yeah, I, it was an old Southern politician friend of mine who always admonished me to keep my words soft and sweet for some day you may have to eat them. And for that reason, I'm going to be very gentle with this, but, you know, we've got, the third project cost is $1,566,000. That's Chad's number. The grant-eligible portion is $3,215,000, according to the resolution. That leaves a case that we're going to get half of $3,215,000, and the difference, and then the difference between $4,505,000 and $3,200,000, which comes out to be $2,900,000 is what you've got to raise. You started this since January, how much have you got raised?
Is this still on?
Yeah, you're wrong, trust me.
Okay. No, that's a very fair question. And I have been reaching out to a lot of different organizations, things like that. General public donations, it has been very slow. We have about $2,200,000 or something like that. $2,200,000.
$2,200,000.
Yes. But I have also had several conversations with, obviously, we're not going to do this by holding bake sales. That's just not going to happen. This, we need heavy hitters, and I have been speaking with some of those potential groups and organizations. I'm not going to put their names out there, because that's not right. But there is a lot of interest in this, in this project. And, you know, again, it's not, I'm not asking for any funds at this point. It's just going out and doing, following what this fundraising scenario looked like, which was portion of it grant-riding, and that's basically what I'm looking to do, so.
I'm going to like Supervisor Wagner. Just one point to follow, just to make a point. I think the fact that we will have at least two more opportunities to reject this when we know the actual scope of it is the only reason I'm going to vote for this. I like the project, I think it's a great project. I've been looking at numbers for two weeks now with Mike, and they scare the daylights out of me. And if any portion of that $2,900 is going to come out of our budget, we're going to have to borrow for that, that scares the daylights out of me. So, I'll vote for it. I'll reserve the right to pull against it in the future, I suppose, if we can't afford it. If it turns out that the fundraising falls short, and we're going to end up taking the bourbon for it, then I don't think we can afford it. I'll go back to Supervisor Clendane.
I'm going to open my stupid mouse again, but if this is fast, she matters me, I won't be a $1,000 donor.
That's writing. You heard it. It's not bribery, but call.
It sounds like you like me.
I think that's a bribe. I would like to draw a Supervisor. Discussion on this? Any further discussion on this issue?
No, let's stay with it.
All right. More further discussion, I would ask you to please, we'll go to the board here in a minute. We've got to get to that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we have a bit of a hat now, so we can see what we're doing. Okay, I would ask you to please vote. The check is in the mail, I assume?
No.
Have to receive that. Close enough. All right. Okay, let's keep moving here. We're way past lunch. You went through a whole bunch of pages there that were part of the attachment of this whole deal. We are at page 114 in the packet right now, which is a second resolution from the Hurst Committee regarding a land exchange for the city.
This will be Resolution 17-6-9, to acquire land for enrollment of Wood County forests in exchange for land currently in the Health and Forests program, and to seek Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approval of the proposed addition and deletion to the Wood County forests. Fiscal note, the county will be responsible for paying associated reporting and closing fees.
Motion by Roser. Timeout.
I apologize to everyone. Could I ask for a short break here, because this meeting went longer than my desk does, and I have to replace it.
How long does that take, Rick?
About 30 seconds.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
I'll go back, make sure that's on, and we'll go from there.
Yes.
We're good?
Thank you.
All right, instant replay of the county board. Back to this, we've heard the reading of the resolution. We have a motion by Supervisor Roser, and we have a second by Supervisor Henkel. Discussion on the resolution. Any discussion on this resolution? No discussion? All right, please vote. Page 117 in your packet, minutes of the Aging Disability Resource Center, Central Wisconsin, April 13th minutes. Their same committee, I'm not sure what, I have different, what was one?
One's finance.
One's finance, yeah, first one is finance, the other one is the general meeting, April 13th, on page 118 and 119, as well as 20. The amended minutes of the ADRC from May 11th, on 121 and 122. Fairgrounds Commission minutes of April 6th, on 123. State Fair Board of Directors minutes, on 124 and 125. McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, April 19th, on 126 and 7. Their minutes from May 17th, on 128 and 9. Their minutes from June, their minutes should have gotten the packet, their minutes from June 5th, on 130. And that takes me to the end of the packet, with the exception of the resolution regarding the long-term employees that we recognized earlier today. So, I would entertain a motion on that by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Supervisor Bry. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
I'd like the clerk to reflect that past unanimously. I have nothing else to come before the board. Does anybody else? Supervisor, just a second. Supervisor Kramer, then Supervisor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to point out that tomorrow, you guys all should receive an email, tomorrow over at the Altenberg Farm, there's an event, the strawberry celebration. For those of you not familiar with it, a nonprofit board has been established. The sole purpose is they leased the farm from Harold. The money's raised or to go to educating our youth in the area, especially at-risk youth ages 14 to 19. You know, some kids can't learn in the classroom setting, so this is an opportunity for kids to learn by getting their hands dirty on the farm. I think it's a tremendous thing that the board and Harold have done. I'd like to just personally invite everyone of you who's there, if you have time, to be nice, there's a lot of local politicians, and any support would be greatly appreciated, so just want to make that aware. Thank you.
Supervisor Powell, do you have something?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question for Supervisor Roser, and my question is just with Mr. Bruce, is he back to his regular salary, or is he still?
Yeah, and so I'll answer this question, and then I'll speak. I think that that is probably an inappropriate question to answer on the county board floor, but I'll be glad to answer that personally for you. Mr. Kraft kind of gave me the nod that that would not be appropriate to talk about compensation for employees with the mic in my hand.
Well, somehow I disagree with that, but then, that's your opinion.
I don't think it's just my opinion, but anyway. Mr. Kastenholz, can I, may I ask you whether that's an appropriate question to ask?
You nodding, Lance?
I'm not stopping anybody. If you can answer the question without providing the salary, that would be nice.
Okay. Okay, I can do that. And would it be appropriate for me to ask Mr. Kraft to answer this question? I don't want to get myself into trouble, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. Bruce had, as you know, has been acting as the interim administrator at Edgewater Haven, and his salary was increased to reflect those increased duties. Now, with our new administrator on board, his salary will be returned to the original salary.
My question was, when will that happen? He's still getting that. He's a little old still.
He wasn't, at least through the end of last year.
He's back to his regular salary.
We haven't been able to make those official changes yet.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, I don't know if I can answer this question. I attended that, one of those meetings, and I remember the transition period where they were discussing, as those duties were assumed by our new administrator for the transition. And I honestly don't know exactly when to start.
The details are being...
I'm sure the committee, and you're a member of that committee, I'm sure that will be discussed going forward. Supervisor Roser, you got another point?
I do. I just want to stand up and apologize for those executive committee that have been. The problem is, is we had that meeting, and I left town for like eight days, and so I was not able to have email access the whole time that I was in New York City, and so those minutes were not reviewed by me. And because they were not reviewed by me, they didn't go in the packet, because I didn't get back until last week. And so, it was all my fault, and I accept full responsibility. I will review those minutes, and we'll get them up on the website for everybody's availability in the next 24 hours.
I will reiterate one more time, if a board supervisor sees that we're missing something that's an important part of the packet, let us know, because we have the ability to get those out behind the desk.
Yes, I could have done it.
Did all members of the executive committee pick up the capital improvement plan? Do they have that? Do they need that? If you're a member of the executive committee, make sure you have that. Next meeting, July 18th, 2017, 9:30 shut. Anything else? I think we're going to adjourn.
Thank you.